Okay, we'll go call the city council meeting, second regular meeting, November twenty first, twenty twenty three at five thirty P M. Father, if everybody was standing, Mr. Reed will lead us in a prayer and a pledge.
Let's pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory for ever and ever. Our Father, as we stand tonight in this Thanksgiving season, Father, we just give thanks unto you for being the God of this whole earth. But mainly, you've watched over Bay St. Louis, you've watched over our city, you've watched over our citizenry. And we have so much to be thankful for. You've protected us, you've guided us, you've given us the wisdom and the knowledge and the understanding that we need to lead our families. Father, you have certainly protected us and been our guide. You've been our sustenance. And Father, we ask that you would continue this. Watch over us in this Thanksgiving season. Give us joy, happiness, and gladness. We ask this and other blessings in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, everyone. First thing is to amend the agenda, consent agenda, for the motion to extend the contract with Delta Water until January thirty first, twenty twenty four. Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Gift, O L A state champions volleyball and golf team. Awesome. Mr. Lewis is gonna read the proclamation.
Well, congratulations. I know the mayor hates that he can't be here tonight, but he's written y'all a couple of great proclamations that I'll do my best in reading as eloquently as he does. So we'll start with the mayor's proclamation for the O L A golf team. Whereas Our Lady Academy Crescent's golf team brought home the state title in the twenty twenty three Class One State Golf Championship on October twenty third and twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, at the Sun Kiss Country Club in Biloxi, Mississippi. Whereas O L A Crescent led both days of the match, but it came down to the final shot on the final hole. Whereas this victory displays your diligent work and devotion, not only as a team, but as individuals. Whereas O L A Crescent championship championship season would not have been possible without the exceptional leadership of Coach Jim Simons. And whereas the city of Bay St. Louis joins in the celebration of your victory, and we salute the team and the coaching staff on their extraordinary and successful season. Now therefore, Michael J. Favre, mayor of the city of Bay St. Louis, along with the city council and all the citizens, do hereby congratulate the Our Lady Academy Crescent's golf team on winning the twenty twenty three Class One State Golf Championship. If we can, if we can get the golf team and then make a quick pitch here and then we'll get to the volleyball. Congratulations, young ladies, on a great accomplishment. And it seems like this is an annual tradition where we have the O L A volleyball team here. So correct me, Coach Corley, what is this, eighteen, eighteen, sixteen? Okay. Those are yet to come. Mayor's proclamation, whereas Our Lady Academy Crescent's volleyball team defeated Alcorn Central Lady Bears in a four-set victory in the three A state finals on October twentieth, twenty twenty three at the University of Mississippi. Whereas O L A Crescent have won every division title since two thousand, which is twenty-four consecutive division titles and have played in nineteen state championships. Whereas this championship win for the O L A Crescent will be their sixteenth volleyball state championship title. This is the most state championships won by any one school in any sport in Mississippi. Whereas this victory displays your diligent work and devotion, not only as a team, but as an individual. Whereas O L A Crescent's championship season would not have been possible without the exceptional leadership of Coach Emily Corley, who has followed in her father Mike Myers' footsteps as the head coach for the O L A Crescent. Now therefore, Michael J. Favre, mayor of the city of Bay St. Louis, along with the city council and all the citizens, do hereby congratulate the Our Lady Academy Crescent's volleyball team on a great season that included winning their sixteenth volleyball state title.
Y'all can stay. Yeah. Thank y'all for attending.
Thank y'all.
Congratulations, too. Keep up the good work.
You two young, young men, I would like to make their prepared man, prepared man.
That's pretty amazing. Sixteen championships.
You gotta switch your camera, Mike, or you're gonna start getting phone calls.
I'm guessing.
You're gonna have to switch your cameras, point over there. We'll start getting calls.
I'm assuming no mayor's report? Unless Reese will have something for the mayor.
No, he's gonna give us a hunting report.
Yeah. Council business, any new or old business, Mr. Hoffman?
Um, I don't have anything right now. Um, just wanna make sure everybody comes out to the Christmas celebrations. Uh, it's uh, this Saturday from five to, I think, eight.
Okay.
Yep.
It's gonna be a parade and, and then at the depot?
And then at the depot and the celebrations at the depot, yes.
Okay, good. All right, Mr. Reed?
Nothing.
All right, Mr. Seal, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Zimmerman, Mr. Noblock?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good, too. Public forum, anybody signed up for?
All right, Mr. Rabbley? Oh, come on now.
They think it'll take a long. Cliff Rabbley, seven oh two third, three. There's a comment regarding the conversation that went on about the gravel driveways and all that. And one of the things that I heard was, we're doing this for safety, for bicycle safety and pedestrian safety.
There's a lag.
Uh, that's, that's pushing it, guys. I have gone by, since Gene mentioned it a couple of months ago, I've been watching driveway. You couldn't pick up a handful of rocks most driveways with or without concrete in this city. We're worried about bicycle safety. We need to have bicyclists start paying attention to traffic rules, like stop sign. I don't know how many of you have had to slide your tires because somebody on a bicycle doesn't think they're supposed to stop at a stop sign. That they'll ride in, not in the middle of the lane, but in the middle of the street and flip you off when you go around them. You know, the law says three foot. You know how close three foot is hanging yardstick out? You can damn near touch. So if we wanna pass an ordinance, because we're worried about pedestrian and bicycle safety, it don't need to be five foot of concrete in front of the gravel driveway. That's, that's, that's pushing the, we're gonna pass an ordinance so we can say we did something thing, which you guys have been very good about not doing. You got an ordinance, you addressing an issue. If we had an issue with gravel driveways, which I, I give you my opinion, I don't think we do. Then we need to do something, but I don't know if we're addressing a problem, we're just doing something. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cliff. Anyone else? No project updates? City clerk's report, motion to approve Bay St. Louis Dock of the Claims number two twenty-three dash oh four six, dated November twenty first, twenty twenty three, an amount of one million, one hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Do you have a motion? Motion, Mr. Seal, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman. Any discussion? Vote to motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes seven zero, thank you. Consent agenda, items A through X. I believe Mr. Seal's requesting that we remove one. Item F be removed for discussion. So consent agenda, items A through X, with F being removed for discussion. Motion, Mr. Seal, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Zimmerman?
Discussion.
All right.
Um, in reference to what Mr. Rabbley was talking about, is this on this particular consent?
No, it was last meeting.
Last meeting.
Okay.
Okay, uh.
Uh, Mr. President, I just had, uh, item E, the motion to approve a five percent rate increase, because I think we had a harbor master here. Can we just kinda discuss that, if you don't mind, harbor master? Uh, and amongst council, I know, refresh me, I know, do we do a three percent escalator every year, or is it subject to, just, we didn't put a cap on it?
Okay. Didn't put a cap.
Actually, before I vote on that, I like it out and have the harbor, oh, he's here.
Yeah, he's here.
When'd you sneak in?
He's right behind you.
Come on up.
Good evening, gentlemen.
All right.
Yeah, so Sean, just, just kinda going through what, you know, kinda what necessitated, you know, I think we've all discussed now, obviously with inflation and there's other factors that go into the operations. And so just kinda what necessitated where we landed on that five percent rate increase, kinda just the justification for that, I guess is what I'm looking for.
Well, if you, if you go back and look at our, uh, our cost related to utility, particularly our, uh, uh, electricity, power, water, and those sorts of things, our garbage expense has gone up. Um, it's simply to offset some of those increases and not find ourselves, you know, six, seven months down the road from now thinking that we probably should have done this. I mean, obviously, we still have the lowest rates, uh, slip fee rates along the Gulf Coast and New Orleans and North Shore. Um, it's a modest increase, uh, you know, we proposed either a three or a five, which essentially comes up to thirty-five cents to forty cents per foot. Uh, and we wanted to go ahead and do it and get it implemented for the first of the year, so it'll coincide with that.
I'm good with it. We don't, certainly wanna be upside down on that with some of the.
Absolutely not, absolutely not. And, um, and quite frankly, our, our utility fees that were charged at the harbor, the ones I mentioned, uh, have significantly increased, along with everything else that's increased over the last year.
Yes. Well, we had to raise the, the water rates a couple of months ago to keep pace, because otherwise we were gonna be in a negative.
Correct.
Uh, really soon.
Correct. Yeah, so when you run the numbers, if you, if you average it out by forty-five feet, which is sort of the average boat length in the harbor, um, it essentially, you know, is fifteen to eighteen dollars per month per boater, um, which makes up about twenty-four thousand dollars annually.
Yeah, so the other problem we have, honestly, these rates need to continue to, um, we need to continue to generate revenue, right? Our capital ma- uh, maintenance fees at sixteen thousand dollars right now, um, we should be ten percent every year annually, replacing ten percent of the wood, the utilities, the infrastructure, right? We have no money to do that today. Um, so this rate, we need, these rate increases need to continue, um, until we can continue to put money in the coffers to maintain the harbor, right? Today, we don't have the excess funds to maintain a harbor as presented by the study that, that happened.
At a percent increase.
Um, so we're, this is not, I know this might be about utilities, but we need to continue to look at these rates because we, the harbor has to be self-sustaining. And today.
Well, you'd like to make a motion on that?
It's hanging, hanging alright. No, I'm just saying, we're talking about wide, it's a rating increase, but, you know, we just need to continue to look at this.
No, but I mean, if we're, if we're gonna be in a negative on maintenance, then we should cover that now.
Oh, we are in a negative. Yeah, we're negative, we've been in a negative on maintenance. We've never generated ten percent, you know, because the, I think the study said every, ten percent of it, every year you should be drilling ten percent of your harbor board replacement, whatever, your infrastructure replacement, or ma- maintenance, I should say, right? So today, you got sixteen thousand dollars in your maintenance fund.
Well, and, and honestly, not just that, but future incidents. We all hate to say the hurricane word, but.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, you know, it's, it's more than just replacing a board here and there. Now, we've done a very good job. If you go down there, you won't see rotten boards or anything like that. Um, but forward-thinking, even beyond general pier maintenance and things like that, I think it's a good idea that we always have something, an emergency fund in place.
Right.
Um, and which is the reason why we really kinda redid this whole lease agreement, what, a little over a year ago, was to put these systems in place so that we can each year, uh, uh, continue to do that.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Mike, where, where are we with, um, reimbursements from all the work that's been done with the harbor from, from Zeta and cleanup and all that?
Yes.
Well, we're still waiting for some of that money to come in, so some of that money will be reimbursed back to the harbor fund.
Not.
Not, not specifically for maintenance, but.
Right.
Money that's been paid out because of an emergency that now needs to come back. But we still need to continue to build on what Doug's saying and Sean's saying, so that we don't get caught short in the future.
Yep, great idea, Doug. Thank you. Yeah. Right.
Right.
And with, and that's the ten percent that Doug's referring to, which was that, that study that was done.
Yep.
Um, you know, all of the immediate and, they, they kind of put it in tears.
Yeah.
You need to take care of this now, these are things down the road. Overall, that report was very positive.
Oh, yes.
Um, but yet there's still things that we, we certainly need to be planning for, from a regular maintenance. Not, not things related to storms or damage or anything like that.
Very terrified of that.
Exactly, exactly.
And I, I agree. I think I've said it for a few years, so I think us being the cheapest on the coast isn't always the best, you know? I think we got an amenity up top that.
Oh, yeah.
It should be, yeah. Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will say this in line with this, just to kinda give y'all an update and an idea. Uh, we're coming into December and we're still ninety-five percent full.
Oh, good.
That's awesome. I mean, we lose, we lose some and then we immediately replace it. So as far as slip, uh, slip fee or slip rentals and leases, we're not having an off-season.
No.
Um, so, and people come and they wanna stay.
Yes.
Um, and I, and I think if, if we don't address these things, in the conversation I had with the mayor, I think we're, we're selling ourselves short. I don't think it's our fees that are drawing people to our harbor.
No.
It may be a small part of it, but I think it's the entire Bay St. Louis, what we have to offer.
I, I agree a hundred percent, and that's why I've always felt we, we could have increased, and at that time was waiting for Pier Five to get done, I think, before we increased at that time. I'm glad to see it increase, mate.
Well, I feel very confident that if we, if we put two more peers out there, we could probably fill them up.
Yeah.
Now, gotta get the money for that, but, you know, there's always that possibility.
Yes.
Gotta generate revenue.
Right.
Thank you, Sean, appreciate it.
Any other questions I can answer for y'all?
I'm good.
Okay, sure, no problem.
All right.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Reese, so on the year-to-date, is it, is this gonna be, when is it gonna roll over to the actual? So we still are showing year-to-date for, um, the, uh, as of September. So when is that gonna roll off? So just in general on the expense, the, the revenue expense, I mean, it's dating back to the last fiscal year, as of September thirtieth, but we should be in the brand, the new. Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just still showing the year-to-date from the fiscal year prior.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just assumed it would, we're, rolled into the new budget, so that would, that would actually then turn that back over. That'd be their first month of October, then we'd see that be the year-to-date, so it'd be the current budget for, for October.
We're showing a hundred percent complete budget.
Yeah.
Because we do have a surplus of funds that you sent me that email on a while back that we need to, as a council, discuss and see where we wanna go with those funds and where they need to be placed, so we can authorize y'all to use it. Well, as, as of now, it's not, because y'all moved it.
What funds are we talking about?
So if we had four hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra, that changed over, and your cash balance, you got two hundred and fifty now. So it's been moved. Where's it moved to? Yeah, and then we're gonna have to reallocate those funds.
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's low after this one.
Oh, yeah.
Well, no. I mean, you sent me a letter saying that we had it, and we didn't, we haven't as a council. I'd like a list of all the loans you're talking about, because you're still saying we had, uh, that's not corresponding to what you're saying. So how many loans are there out there? So where would I find that? Where would I find that? Okay. When can we get those?
So just to clarify, I said.
Yeah, but, yeah, but you don't say, but you don't say, hey, we're moving money from this one to that one.
It's on the docket.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Like, I, item L on the consent agenda has numerous transfers.
Yeah, yeah.
Always that talk about you begin the zer- begin the year with a zero balance, but you gotta pay your bills, so you can't begin the year with a zero balance.
Exactly, just 'cause you look at O on here, sixty thousand dollars is the fund of debt services gonna be repaid in January when we get our first Avalon tax. So that's sixty, that four something that Gary may be talking about, that's. All right. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? I hear the motion by Mr. Seal and second by Mr. Zimmerman. If not, vote to motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye, passes seven zero. Um, discussion was on, uh, F, the plan and zoning schedule.
Explain that, Mike, what they were trying to do.
That's really a pretty good idea, what they're doing.
I think we're still gonna run into, I mean, especially.
It's not gonna change.
It's Halloween, Halloween and Christmas, I mean, they, they rotate, so I mean, next year we're gonna run into the issue where if we change the Wednesday, Halloween falls on Wednesday. So you have to move it, so I mean, you're all gonna, always gonna have those conflicts.
I don't see how it's gonna change anything. You've still got the same amount of time. You're gonna start on Wednesday and end on Wednesday instead of starting on Tuesday and ending on Tuesday. Still the same amount of days.
Yeah, but it's the way it's being placed right now, if they have a public meeting.
On the first meeting?
If they have a plan and zoning meeting and they rule on it, you can't even view the minutes, you know, to, to do that, 'cause it comes the, the following week.
That's what I'm saying, so, so this is gonna go, it's still gonna stay on the first meeting, but you'll have three weeks in between planning and zoning and when our first meeting occurs on the first Tuesday after the first Monday of the next month.
Say that again.
Yeah.
That's a turn charm.
As opposed to going to the, right, so I'm saying, so it's not going to our second meeting of the month. It's gonna stay on our first, but it will give us more time between planning and zoning meeting and when our first meeting is. Instead of being that last week and then we're the first week.
I apologize, I was looking at it wrong. I was throwing on that, so it'll be the second, it'll be the second Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, actually, it does give us more time. I do like that aspect.
Yeah, I mean, the advertising, Doug, is, you're correct, all, all that's gonna stay the same as far as timing goes. But it'll give us, I think, two to three weeks, most, most months, between the planning zoning meeting and then when it's gonna be on our agenda. As opposed to a week.
I know, but we still get the packages and we still get planning and zoning is up, teed up right now on, on your website. You can go look at it today.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so the information is there. Are you gonna do anything different with the information if we change the meetings? Or it's, it's just gonna be changed in the meeting day?
From Tuesday to Wednesday.
Yeah, I'm honestly, right.
I don't know if it's gonna be anything different on the front end.
Right now. You could go look today and start talking to people about it.
Yeah. It's not gonna change anything on the front end at all.
Right, right.
I mean, like you said, the agenda's already up today. I looked at it.
Yeah, it's there already, so you can.
Three things on there.
Start doing homework today.
But as far as after the fact, after planning and zoning, if there are concerns that come up, it gives us three weeks to address those concerns as opposed to a week, is the only difference that I see in what's, what they're proposing.
Right, right. Not, and again, Wednesday night with church and I don't think I, I don't care when they do it, quite honestly, but it's, Wednesday used to be a big night that you, you stayed away from. And I could, things have changed over the years, so, um, that'd be the only thing that somebody could complain about if Baptist Church, Methodist Church, whoever meets on Wednesday nights. And, but again, I'm not compassionate about either way.
And I guess, and the application deadline is rolling to something more consistent with you, so kind of the first few months, we're gonna have to kinda get it earlier than what the deadline typically is, right? So for the January meet, you gotta have the deadline, but.
Right.
Yeah. We'll get caught back up to where it's essentially a month before, but it, it kinda in June, May and June. And then it's, 'cause, 'cause the application deadline's safer, planning's only for January, it's gonna be November seventeenth, which is already passed.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, and then we'll find, we'll catch up with the, the typical deadline, kinda middle of the.
Okay. All right. I'm good with it, if you want to try it.
What does the Planning and Zoning Commission think of? I'm good with it, I think it'll give us more time to.
I'm good, so you wanna go ahead and have a motion to go ahead and spread the Planning Zoning Commission meeting schedule and application deadline starting in twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mr. No Block? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman? Any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes six one. No Attorney's Report? Yeah, I know. Motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Hold up, minutes, minutes.
Minutes.
Motion approved, minutes November seventh.
Yeah, it is, number nine, you skipped over.
Oh, it's not on the.
It's not on the paper copy.
It's not on the paper copy I was reading from, I'm sorry.
Oh. Uh, that's fine.
Okay.
Motion changes.
Yeah, okay, motion, Mr. Seal, approved the minutes of, uh, November seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman? Any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes seven zero, now, motion to adjourn. Motion, Mr. Seal, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. No Block? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, so seven zero, thank you all, gentlemen, everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, thank you.